Regular monthly meeting, the Anderson County Board of Education will come to work. Greg, will you lead us in the pledge?
Say Greg.
What did you say?
Me, I'm Dale.
Oh Dale. Gregory Dale.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brain did.
Pam's gonna get on to you on that one.
I'll go to do the resolution. It is always exciting when we can do resolutions and I know the board is really, the board does a great job with honoring and recognizing all the hard work we have. And so this month, we are recognizing our teachers and I will read the board's resolution. Whereas teachers nurture students and engage them in activities which will educate and graduate tomorrow citizens and leaders. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing teaching materials, grading papers, and projects, studying about issues in education, consulting with administration, parents and students, and fellow educators. And whereas teachers create a safe and healthy learning environment for the students to enjoy while they participate in daily lessons. And whereas the best teachers demonstrate an exemplary attitude and establish rapport with the students. And whereas great teachers transmit their passion of learning into their students. And whereas effective teachers give positive and constructive advice, praise accomplishments, and adjust their teaching styles as needed to meet the individual needs of each student. Now therefore be it resolved that Anderson County Board of Education recognizes the numerous contributions that our teachers made each day by establishing May 11th, 2022, as Teacher Appreciation Day for all Anderson County schools. And be it further resolved that the board expresses appreciation and thanks to the teachers in our school system and encourages each school and community to recognize them for their contributions to the success of our school system and its students. Approved by the Anderson County Board of Education, meeting in regular session on May, on the ninth day of May, 2022. Adopted wholeheartedly and unanimously by an elected school board of Anderson County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session, the ninth day of May, 2022.
Great. Move we adopt the resolution?
Second.
Move in second, we adopt the resolutions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no motion carries. Congratulations.
Yep, they did a good job. And then, Dr. Burrow, we have one guest, Megan Owenby, if you want to come forward. She is our point person with EAS, our substitutes, and she's going to, we've kind of, sometimes we, we, we get them left out. They were the only group left out, so this year, we're going to take care of that problem.
While recognizing all of the teachers and their hard work, we wanted to just take a quick moment and recognize some of the substitute teachers that have made a huge difference in the schools this year as well.
Yes. So, thank you for having me this evening. I'm Megan Owenby with ESS, the recruiter and account manager of the substitutes in Anderson County. I'm here to present the substitute of the year awards. Well, I actually presented the awards to them over the course of last week. But I am here to present the substitutes of the year for the 2021-2022 school year. Four substitutes of the year were selected for preschool, elementary, middle, and high school. I'm going to start with the high school substitute of the year, Mr. Charles McBroom Jr. Mr. McBroom primarily subs at Clinton High School. He will also help at Clinton Middle School whenever asked. This is a few things, or these are a few things that Clinton High School had to say about him when he was nominated, that he always does whatever is asked of him. He will go wherever needed without complaint. They can even send him to a different class every block and he doesn't mind. He's always on time, actually early, and always shows up. And he's very polite and always in a good mood. Next are middle school substitutes of the years, Kate Tipton. I have not been able to present Kate with her certificate and award yet because she was only subbing Monday this past week, but I will present it to her soon. She is always on time, asks for help when necessary. She's been a huge help at Clinton Middle School. And when nominated, those are the things they had to say about her and that she has a positive attitude. Brandy Weber is our elementary substitute of the year. She primarily subs at Lake City Elementary, where they had an endless amount of nice things to say about her, that she's dedicated, dependable, she's always willing and available to work any position, being flexible if they ask her to move to a different position after she arrives, with a smile on her face. She even volunteers on days she's not subbing and they consider her an asset and a friend to them all at Lake City Elementary. Teresa Cooper is our preschool substitute of the year. When nominated, the preschool said that she had been helping them tremendously. She's dependable and consistent and they greatly appreciate her. Each sub of the year was given a certificate to acknowledge their exceptional dedication for the 2021-2022 school year, as well as a gift card. But while I'm here, I also want to speak about some contributions for all of our hardworking substitutes. I've been putting together some appreciation baskets or boxes for all of our subs for the end of the school year. There are several businesses in Anderson County that I would like to recognize and say a huge thank you for donations towards this substitute appreciation. Southeast Equipment Sales donated $100 towards the substitute of the year awards. Applebee's gave four $25 gift cards for each substitute of the year. Golden Girls Restaurant has dessert certificates for each sub of the year. And those Applebee's and Golden Girls certificates will be given to them by the end of the school year as they were not ready to pick up, as well as Wendy's, Arby's, Master Donuts, Chicken Salad Chick Dunkin' Donuts, and Southern Gossip Boutique for their donations to all of our hardworking and dedicated subs here in Anderson County. And lastly, I just want to thank all of you for being a wonderful district to work with. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of the agenda.
So move.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add an item under, action item. I'm, I'm going to throw my hat in the ring for the East Director for the Tennessee School Board Association, and I need our board's approval to do that. That's the position that Ms. Williams held and she resigned that position. So, it ought to be somebody from Anderson County.
I'll second.
Move in second, with that change, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no motion carries. Approval of consent.
Mr. Chairman, I know we approved it as a group, but I had some comments on the Student Services Report when we approved that one.
You can remove it from the consent agenda.
Okay, let, I make, could I ask that we pull Student Services out of the consent agenda for discussion?
So move.
Second.
Move second, we approve the consent agenda with the removal of that one item. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no motion carries.
Can we pull it out right now?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right.
I was just concerned that on those, practically every one of them has the THC in it. Is that vaping or is that?
That is THC vape. Sure is.
It is?
Yep.
I mean, out of, what do we have, about 15 on there?
Yep.
Come to Paula, she's going to address this for us, I guess.
It is, it's a cartridge with THC, which is basically marijuana in the cartridge.
Vaping is a, is a, is a major problem right now in all of our schools, but it, and I think what it is, if they can get it online, they can get it at a store, at the gas station and everything. It's called Delta 8.
There are two types of Delta, there's a Delta 8 and a Delta 9 in a cartridge. Delta 8, they can get at the store and it has a small amount of Delta 9 in there, which is illegal, but they can still sell it at the store. And so they can readily get those if someone will go in and purchase it for them, even though it's illegal to get unless you're 21 or older.
We, this, our hands are pretty much, what can we do? I mean, we's...
Well, we, we've really had a lot of conversations about this. We were, what, what is happening is, as you look at that, is our discipline has really and truly went almost down to nothing in our schools. But we're filling CRCS up with THC, which is not what that school was designed for. And so we've been working, Mr. Deal's been working with the district attorney and with juvenile court to see if there's anything else we can do, because one of the concerns is if, if they send off a cartridge to get it tested, it could be
A year.
A year before we get it back. So, we're looking at trying to, we've got, we've had to put a committee together and our code of conduct to try to see if we can do something else to, to get the parents involved more. Because if you just send a student to CRCS, the parent didn't get involved, to try to get some, some more education that the parent would have to do and, and get the courts involved, because it is, it is a felony, but it also comes under a tobacco violation. We can do it one way or the other. So, and when we found out, really and truly, we're one of a very few school system that's even looking at it. A lot of school systems are just treating it as a tobacco violation or just treating it as an insubordination moving on. So, so Paula and her staff's really working into it. It's just, it is a society.
Our officers test those and we'll get a positive read off those, but we still send it to the TBI and that's what takes so long to get that back. So, we go ahead and go to juvenile court and then they'll go ahead and give their charges downstairs without getting that back from TBI. So, we're just churning our wheels with that situation so far.
Have we thought about, and this has been years ago, but we did a thing where you could not participate in extracurriculars if you had certain types of violations. And I know that, you know, we have now made it a rule just among volleyball team that if you get caught with a vaping device, you're not going to be able to participate on volleyball program. And, you know, maybe something like that where we did it system-wide with the band, with ROTC, with all athletics, all groups, because it, you know, the severity of the punishment is what's going to grab their attention. A lot of these kids are thinking it's not that big a deal, is what we're finding.
Yes. Well, and I think that's what we were finding out. We were doing, we were sending them to CRCS for 20 days. Well, they were going up there for 20 days and part of the time, they were missing days, they weren't doing that. Then when they were coming back, they were so far behind, then it was really putting the teachers at a disadvantage because they were trying to help the student make it up. So that, no, that's a good idea. We can look into that and see if that's something we could do and try to do those. And I think too, is trying to get, juvenile court wants to help us. Judge Hunt is really good about, okay, how can we do that and how can we get, like I said, how can we get parents involved? And, and I think, you know, with, the thing you don't see anymore in our schools is smoking in the bathroom or really and truly, the smokeless tobacco is, is kind of non-existent anymore. And it's, it's rarely went to the vapes. And so, those are some things that...
They don't realize that, that it still tests positive for marijuana.
It, it is. And you know, we even have the sniffers. We have vape sniffers in our bathrooms. So, when it, it sends an alert if there's a, so we catch them. It's, but it's...
Don't you think it's because they see so many of the vape shops that in their head, they don't look at it as they're doing anything wrong? It was, I mean, they're everywhere.
The advertisement's geared for teenagers.
Yeah, the advertisement's geared for teenagers. Yep, it is. Yep. That's a good idea. We'll put that in with, because we, we left it in the code of conduct. We didn't change anything because it's give us a brow, but we've got a time to set up a meeting and say, okay, how can we, how can we really focus in on it differently this year? So, y'all have the same concerns we have.
While you're discussing this, though, we're going to stick with what you, what you got.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We're not, we're not going back off and just say it's a tobacco violation. We're going to steal, we still want to do that. We still want to, and we want to change their, we want to change their thinking on it. That's what we want to do because it, that vape really messes with them.
I was going to say, I was going to say that a lot of the athletes wouldn't do that to their bodies. The athletes I know are real into their health and, you know, working out and everything.
We're seeing it at the middle school. The middle school kids are coming in with it like it's nothing. They don't, I don't think they grasp what it is.
Because there's a lot of, they thought it, there wasn't, you know, it's just vapor, it's just these things. But then you don't know, because it's just like drinks. Kids drink after each other. I don't know why, but you'll have five or six kids drinking out of the same Coke bottle. And that's the way they do with the vapes. Here, here, here. So, they have no idea and they don't know what's in it. So, usually when we catch one, there's three more of them standing around in a stall doing the same thing.
And I assume they know what they're doing. They know Delta 8 has got this in it and...
Yes.
I honestly don't think that they, that some of them don't know. I think there's a lot of ignorance out there that, because they see that they can buy it at the store and they go, how could I buy something with marijuana at the store?
How are they allowed to sell it even over, if it has marijuana, how are these stores allowed to sell it?
Marijuana has, is a naturally occurring substance and it's in more products than you think. And as long as it's such a small amount, Tennessee will allow the selling of it.
I will say this, our SROs are teaching about this with the LEAD program in the elementary schools. And then our FRC staff is teaching about it in the middle schools so far. And then they're going to branch out next year.
And then, and then we're working with the mayor and with, Mr. Deal's working with his SROs and we're doing a campaign right now too with, and with ASAP on fentanyl. Because some of these is laced with fentanyl and some of these kids, it just takes a little bit
Kill them.
To kill them. So, we're really doing some videos with that and got some signage going up in our school. So, trying to really focus in on that, the health of our students.
I hope this county never faces that. I hope we never have a child that does that.
Well, and, and you know, we, we have had, the, the mayor, she, she gets an email every time there's an OD and they're getting to be a lot younger people that are overdosing. We just had Narcan training for all of our principals and we even did it down to elementary school. Because we've had parents that have OD'd in the car rider line. And we had a young boy that came and, and said, can I have a Narcan? I'm afraid my mother's going to OD. And they had to find out, hey, he's in a middle school, can we give it to him? And they could, they could give him because he was worried about his mother ODing at home. So, you know, that, that's one of the things we, our, our kids are really resilient in what they do, but we do have some of them out there that, just like Mr. Ketchel said, don't take it seriously.
It's horrible. Kids ought to be worrying if they brought their cleats to school for the ballgame.
Yep, that's it.
Not Narcan.
Exactly right. Yep.
Thank you for letting me bring that up.
Thank you all.
Do we need to approve that?
No, we're just, it, it, we're still going to work on it. We'll bring something back before schools don't...
Do we need to approve the HR report?
Yes, you will need to approve that. Yes.
I move we approve the HR report.
Second.
Move second.
Student Services.
Student Services.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Student Services. Second. I second it.
Move in second, we approve
Student Services.
Food Service Report, our Student Service Report. Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no motion carries. Executive approval of the was none this month. Comments from the chair above and beyond awards.
Dr. Burrow, I'll start with that. You know, we always give a check for $25 and we have a lot of schools this time that just wanted to buy, take that $25 and buy donuts or something for all their staff. So, I'll read those for Anderson County Career and Technical Center, Clinton Middle School, Clinton High School, Clinch River Community School, Lake City Middle School, Norwood Elementary School, Andersonville Elementary School, Bryceford Elementary School, and Norris Elementary School. And they all received their $25 check. So, we'll let you finish up with the rest of them.
Okay. Glenn Lee.
Next one is Innovation Academy Ginger Seals.
I have North Middle Rachel Madron and Norwood Middle Daryl Byrd.
I have Fairview Elementary Becky Dayton and Anderson County High School John Malarium.
I have Dust Valley Elementary Connie Lundey. I have Lake City Elementary Tammy Turnbill.
From Grand Oaks Elementary Beth Crownover.
And Claxton Elementary Melissa Hughes, who is retiring this year after, what, 34 years, I think she has.
And I have preschool Jamie Sizel. I guess that's pronounced Sizel.
You got the tough one this year.
Sizzle, okay.
That is, all I have is comments from the chair. Comments from the student board.
Are y'all glad this is your last time you have to get up there and do that?
It was honestly a little sad. I'm not going to lie. Well, I'm glad to be back here with you guys tonight. This past month, this past month at Anderson County High School has been pretty exciting. First off, we recognized our 30-plus ACT members and our Elite 100 students at the baseball game of Anderson County versus Clinton High School the other night. We are super proud of their hard work and determination they have shown this school year. On April 29th, both Clinton and Anderson County students had their youth leadership Anderson County graduation with Mr. Rick Meredith giving us insight on how companies new to our area and surrounding areas decide where they want to build their facilities and support their programs. Our drama club recently put on their spring play, The Trial of Robin Hood, and it was a huge success. Last week, our seniors also had their academic signing day, signing the banner of the college or university that they will be attending. After signing day, our student government held our first ever Powder Puff Football Tournament between our grade levels and our seniors, who were coached by me, ended up winning our tournament. So, props to them. Everybody had a really good time. Our seniors also had our senior sunset, which was put on by our Student Government Association with help from Faith Promise Church, who provided food and games. And we ended up watching High School Musical 3, which is the movie where they all graduate. So, it was a little upset, but it was fun. Our baseball, softball, men's soccer teams all held their senior nights and celebrated their senior teammates. Both baseball and softball start their district tournament games tonight, both playing at Halls versus Clinton. I want to congratulate Jeremiah Flatford for also making All-State SATB choir. Our students started their AP exams last week and will continue to succeed in taking them. And tomorrow, Tuesday night, is our awards night for our seniors, who will be receiving scholarships to go to the different colleges and universities they will be attending. Our seniors' last day is Wednesday and we will have graduation practice along with our senior lunch this Thursday during the mid-morning service, with our graduation being Friday. So, that will be a little sad, but I think everybody will have a good time. I want to thank all of you for allowing me to represent you all in my school and selecting me as Anderson County High School School Board Representative for the 2021-2022 school year. It has been an honor and I have enjoyed it so much. Thank you all for choosing me.
Well, good evening, everyone. Since this is my final report for you all, I'd like to share the wonderful highlights of this entire school year at Clinton High School. Over 100 CHS juniors have visited colleges this year on gear-up trips in the last 12 months during their excused state testing days. The rising seniors are already off to a great start with college preparedness. Additionally, 12 Helping Hand scholarships will be awarded this year to CHS and Anderson County High School seniors attending TCAT in the fall of 2022. This is the largest group of technical students to receive scholarships in the history of any high school in our county. Roanoke State hosted Raider-ready events on Clinton campus to help students prepare to become successful students at Roanoke State. Almost 87 seniors attended the event. This year, we have given 17 Advanced Placement Tests, which is a four-subject increase in the number of AP exams offered this year. We have also doubled the number of students testing for state dual credit exams, which means more and more students are earning college credit. One of our biggest accomplishments at CHS is we have increased our ready graduate rate by 10% over the last year and increased our ACT composite score school-wide by one point. In just a few minutes, Clinton and Anderson County will be playing each other in the baseball district tournament. So, I'm excited to see how that game goes. Finally, a big announcement for Clinton will be revealed tomorrow. But for right now, I can say Clinton High School has been chosen to be one of only five schools in the state to be a computer science model school. Teachers got to start this process last Tuesday by going to Wonder Works in Anakeeta to see how computer science is incorporated into the workforce and why students need these skills. As part of the program, CHS will receive $13,000 to help students, to help teachers incorporate computer science into their classrooms throughout the year. I want to end my final report by saying thank you for this wonderful opportunity to present the highlights of the school year each month and revel in my dragon pride. I'm grateful I was given this privilege and I promise to make you all proud as a Clinton High School lumina at the University of Tennessee this coming fall. I'll see you all at graduation in a couple of weeks. Dragon pride or die forever.
This is a card and a little gift from the Board of Education. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
For what you've done. You've done a great job.
Scarlett, Sully, I'd like to thank you all from the board for keeping us so well-informed that all year. Y'all have done a great job and been great representatives of the board.
You couldn't have asked for two better people to represent your respective high schools. And the two of you articulate, you're kind, you're always smiling. And Scarlett, before you leave, Sully was a little shy and did not announce that he won a world championship this past Wednesday. So, you have to tell the board that Sully, about Sully's world championship experience.
This is the newest champion of Second Baptist Student Ministry of the Tin Piece McDonald's Chicken Nugget Eating Competition.
Good deal.
Y'all have been great.
Yep, yep.
You have set the bar real high for this year. Mr. Snyder.
You know, every year, we think we have really good ones and the next year, you know, I, I don't know how we're going to top you.
Director's report.
Okay, just a couple of things and then I want to read, I try to, to add to this every year when it's Teacher Appreciation Week. But we had, we invited all the county commissioners and the ones that are running to visit our schools today. And we had about 13 of them that went and visited different schools. And then they ended up at ACCTC with lunch and we took a tour there and had a really question and answer. It was a good day. We answered a lot of questions that they had about the schools and we got to, we got to really talk about the schools. Ms. Langenberg and Ms. Williams, they were there too today to kind of cheer us on. So, they did a great job. So, thank you all for coming. So, as you know, they are our funding body and we want to make sure that what we're doing, they understand it. So, as for, just for teacher appreciation, I want to read some things. In honor of teacher appreciation, I want to thank you to teachers. Thank you for giving more of yourself to your students than you ever thought possible. Thank you for all the long nights grading papers, cutting out projects, so the next day you could focus on something new. Thank you for becoming the parent to a kid who hardly had one of his own. Thank you for attending all the after-school events and for all the hot dogs you purchased for a fundraiser. Thank you for being a role model. Thank you for the smiles we see every day, even when you were up sick all night. Thank you for the hugs you give kids when they really need them. Thank you for paying for a child's field trip when they didn't have the money to go on one. Thank you for the new pair of shoes you bought for a student but told them you just had them lying around your house and needed to get rid of them. I get kind of emotional this because it's, you see it every day. Thank you for being a friend. Thank you for the knowledge you compel to our students to have lifelong hunger for knowledge. Thank you for the values for compassion, hard work, bravery, and integrity you show our students each and every day. Thank you for the time. Every time you go to Walmart, it takes you an extra half hour to check out because somebody wants to know something. Thank you for the commitment to be a lifelong learner. Thank you for your dedication to achieving so much more than you ever thought possible. you for your dedication to achieving so much more than you ever thought possible. Thank you for always being there for every student every day. And thank you for keeping your cool every time someone says, I would like to have the summers off. And thank you for giving young adults the confidence and courage to follow their dreams. And I know that you all do with me. Thank every teacher for the hard work they do because without them, we're only one group of students away from just total chaos. And the world is a crazy place out there. And we have the most awesome group of teachers that each and every day, they give 120 and 130% of their self to this community. So I'm thankful that they just allowed me to be part of it. So that's all I have, Dr. Burrell.
Can we all have a copy of that?
You sure can.
Do all the teachers receive one?
Yeah, I will send that out to them. And I'll send you all a copy to it. I just add to it every year I get in my office. And I had to take, this is beyond us, this is the first time I've had to take a lot of them off of it. Because last year, it was talking about, thank you for hugging kids even when you knew you were going to get sick. And thank you for taking temperatures and cleaning the bathrooms and all that stuff. They really stepped up over the last two years. So yes, I will get that too.
Thank you.
Tim, I have two quick things. One, I'd like to put on the, remind you for August, we had an employee, a former employee, Rita Ackler. This is the 50th anniversary of Title IX. Andy actually probably talked with Coach Ackler back in the day. And she is still alive, lives in assisted living. She's 94 years old, I believe, and was the first female PE teacher in the school system. The TWS double A just recognized her as the pioneer award winner for the state of Tennessee for advancements for females education. And as much as I've done with volleyball, I did not know that she actually started the very first TWS double A sanctioned volleyball sport for women with the volleyball team at Norris High School back in 76, 77 school year. They were number one. And the TWS double A went through a lot of people to pick from. Coach Ackler was, our own was picked. We're going to recognize her at a volleyball event in August. And I thought that board meeting would be a good time to bring her in. And we're going to ask all of the former players to come and have a dinner and stuff for at one of the matches. So that was my positive thing. My negative thing is that you all have all followed the leaked Supreme Court decision on Roe v. Wade. I think as of today, four states have proposed legislation to end public education. Because public education, Texas being the biggest of them, public education is not specifically set forth in the Constitution. And while I don't know if Tennessee, since we don't have a state income tax, would be as incentivized as some states would be, I think we all need to start being very aware of this. And because it's going to come down to your General Assembly. And I think we need to be very active and aware that this is occurring. And with Texas doing it, that sends a pretty powerful message.
So where would the children go to school?
You would either have to have a charter school, you would have to pay to go to a private school. But there would be no state-funded education money that would come whatsoever. Because all of your, your money, with the exception of special ed money, essentially comes from the state. Since it's not set forth in the Constitution, if the state votes to no longer fund education, there is no right to a free appropriate public education that exists.
Just assume.
It is, it is one of those Ninth Amendment, per number of rights that was set forth in Griswold and Affirm Ben Row. And under this leaked opinion, they have said that if it is not specifically enumerated, it does not exist, and it falls to the state to decide. And Texas is the biggest of the entities that the governor proposed, and the Senate has backed legislation to end publicly funded, publicly funded education at the state level.
Look, I'm going to ask a question that most of these people out here probably want to know. What happens to their retirement and that type stuff?
Your retirement as an employee would have to stay in because it's federally backed as a RISA-based retirement. So they would have to continue for the employees that were there to fund that. But what would happen realistically is if you're not getting money to run a state system, charter schools would then take over all of your schools, and they would be run by churches or private entities. They couldn't, a private entity couldn't really take over a public school, but a charter school would. And again, we're not, we don't have a state income tax, so there's not the incentive in Tennessee that there would be in a state incomes tax state to do it. But it is going to be your first battle line that you will see come through. And it will happen fast if we do not keep our people in line and just remember to that when we vote for these General Assemblymen and state senators.
Yep. But it is in our state constitution.
It is in the Tennessee Constitution.
It's in the Tennessee Constitution, which can be amended by two-thirds of our body. And I really don't think it will happen here because we're not incentivized because of the taxes. You know, these states that have a state income tax are more incentivized than.
Majority of them do have state income tax.
Does it have to be approved by the legislature?
What would happen is, like in Texas, the governor has already proposed it, the Senate has passed it. And then it's if they reach probably three, I think it would be a three-fourths majority of their Senate and House.
So it wouldn't even have to be voted on by the people?
No. No, it could. It can go either way. You could either go through the people, but you're never going to get enough votes to do that. It would, it's going to go through the assembly. It's scary.
Yeah, it is scary.
What happened to people who couldn't afford to go to private schools?
They don't go to school. Keep in mind, keep in mind, up until after the Civil War, you didn't have public education. It's a relatively new thing. I mean, it used to, your church was your public school building. And, you know, it was probably in the early 1900s that the idea of public school started to come along. I mean, I think 1890 was when Anderson County opened its first public school. So that's really, you know, not much older than Andy. So.
Well, it's probably closer to Greg's. I've been aggravating Greg about his age today.
But that's all I had. And I'll get, Tim, I'll get you stuff on Coach Ackler before August.
Thanks for sharing that. I didn't know that about the school.
Yeah, she's, she's three years older than my dad. Or younger than my dad.
The only, the only other thing I had too tonight is, if I could, April Myers, if she would stand up, she is our new principal, going to take over at Clinton Middle School next year. I just wanted her to put a face to the name.
Those of my children were fortunate enough to have her, and she will be a great addition to Clinton Middle School. So I love that.
That's all I have.
Yep. Committee reports. Budget?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget committee met just moments ago.
Yet it seems so long.
It seems so long ago. So I will not go back through all these. But the Budget Committee did approve appropriations 1A through 1F and sent them to the full board for approval. And I will make that motion.
Most remain second to approve appropriations 1A through 1F. Discussion. If not, roll call vote.
Mr. Bale?
Aye.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Gillenwater?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Mr. McCamey?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
And Dr. Burrell?
Aye.
Most carries.
We also approve transfers 2A through 2L and forwarded those to the full board. And I move for approval.
Second.
Move second approval of transfers 2A through 2L. Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose no, motion carries.
I don't have the job. I've got to go back and get.
I think, I think it's been such a short time, we probably don't need to review that.
That's all from budget, by the way.
Our policy committee, I'm going to echo what Scott said. We met just a few minutes ago. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on these. So I'm going to be.
What were the numbers, Joe?
4.605.
4.605 and?
1.404.
1.404.
I move we approve.
4.605.
On first reading.
1.404.
Second.
Both of them?
Yep.
Move second, we approve policy changes 4.605, 1.404. Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose no, motion carries. That'd be short and sweet.
We, we have two action items, the MOU with the Board of Education.
Three.
Three, yeah, and yours. I'm sorry. We have, we have, I think it was unanimous, wasn't it, Mr. Snyder, to approve the MOU with ACEA. So I'd ask that you approve that.
And I did forward the changes to all the board members. I highlighted those. So if you have any questions, ask Mr. Snyder.
Move we approve, Sharon.
I'll second that.
Move second, we approve the MOU between the Board of Education and ACEA. Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose no, motion carries. Everybody will understand this is a contract between the board and the teachers.
Then the last one, I'll kick you back.
Approve student code of conduct 2022 changes.
I have a question. Can I ask a question before we motion on that?
Yes.
Okay. We were talking about doing the, what Dale suggested about the vaping and does that need to be added in there before we approve that?
We can, we have it, we have it so broad that we can change that, and we don't have to change. We just change it in our procedures instead of the policy.
Okay.
Yep. And you were sent a copy. There was very few changes. Most of it was really just clinging up some stuff. We, it's one of the great things that we have. We have a good student code of conduct that really and truly encompasses everything we need.
Does anybody need a copy?
I'll get you a copy as soon as we.
They usually give us a copy.
Yeah, we'll get a copy when they come out.
Since we get it printed, I'll send you a copy in your box.
When are those printed or?
If and when you approve that, I'll get those printed in your box and send you an electronic copy.
Like two, three years ago, I was having trouble sleeping, and I started going through this thing. And there, there's just some little tiny things. But, but I even glanced at this one and.
It's not ready to go. There's some page numbers.
There's a couple of references. Okay, okay.
There's some things that need to be fixed, yes.
And I don't remember now exactly where it is, but I've got another one too.
Okay.
I'll pass those along to you.
Yeah, pass them along to her. And then we don't print, we actually don't. Everything's electronic now. We just print out a few of them for the new students.
I do print out some for administrators and for you guys.
You used to answer questions.
Yes, right, right. Yeah, it's a great book. It's very informative. But there've been some errors in there for years that I'm sure you're not even.
They're obvious.
I'm glad you didn't ask me that question.
Tim was on that committee at that time.
I did, I did. The biggest thing we used to have is we figured out what color that the book, outside the book was going to be. That was a big discussion.
That's the burning question every year.
Everybody wanted to know.
I move we approve the changes for the student code of conduct.
Second.
Move second that we approve the changes of the student code of conduct 2022. Discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose no, motion carries.
Then the one we added to it, what will that need to say?
Joe's going to make that motion.
I'll make a motion that the board endorses Scott Gillenwater's application to apply for East District's Director for the Tennessee School Board Association.
Second.
That's it.
Was that a motion?
That's a motion.
Linda seconded.
Motion made in second that we approve Scott Gillenwater's appointment as.
Application.
Application. Still got to run for it.
For, for east.
East, east director.
East.
East director of TSB.
Right. I'm currently serving as an at-large director. I'm currently serving as an at-large member. So this is.
What is the difference, Scott, in that, in there too? At-large and A.
Yeah, well, you did it, but.
Yeah, it's, at-large is only a one-year appointment. And then fortunately, I was appointed for the next one. It is two or three years.
So there are a few duties in the east, east area of the state that this person does.
If no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose no. Congratulations, Scott.
Thank you, thank you. Now I can apply.
Now you can fly.
Tim, do we need to take any action on art?
We're going, we're going, we're going to go into, we're not going into this active session. But I just need to talk to you all for just a minute about a, about a concern. Not really a concern, something we won't try to do. If you all will head to my office right fast for about five minutes.
Are we a journey?
We're a journey.
Are we, are we a journey? Are we coming?